It's two o'clock, I'm calling the R and I meeting to work. We have a quorum, we're missing one person.
For me.
For me, but we have President Julie Amade, Jim Webb, Stephen Seaver, and Derek Williams. Okay, I don't have a chairperson's report. Let's do the ad hoc subcommittee reports. I believe Derek Williams has a report on the Brian disposal ad hoc.
Yes, I do. I will hand out some minutes that did not get into the package. And these are around. These are minutes from a meeting that the Brian Wish Disposal Ad Hoc Committee had with Mr. Dianzo. To look at the potential options for Brian Wish Disposal. There is, there are no suggestions on this. This was simply to make sure we had a, the complete list that people knew about. And they are not listed necessarily in order of priority. Some of them probably are things that could be done. Many of them rely on other activities such as if there were a regional treatment plant, we could do something else. If, if San Sibian CSD moved their treatment plant, something could, there could be some advantages taken there. So some of these rely on other activities, but it is a list of eight potential Brian disposal options. With a short list of pros and cons, but not an extensive list there. So this is the group, this is the list of options that we're starting with to look at what could be feasibly done.
Okay, so you're still working on the committee assignment, but this is an update?
This is an update on the committee assignment, exactly, yeah.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments on Mr. Williams' update? No, we now have a meeting member Meeks present. We should note that. Okay, do we have an ad hoc committee report from the water?
That would be me.
Okay, Mr. Webb.
And I have decided I don't really want to go through all the history of all the sources, potential sources of water that we've looked at. Because frankly, that activity's been going on for at least 20, 25 years that I've been here. And I just don't think it's particularly fruitful. For example, ACE, the Army Corps of Engineers, at one point gave a proposal to dam San Simen Creek. And reroute San Simen Creek Road for miles to get around the new whale rock like reservoir that would have been created. Well, you know, that really didn't go anywhere. And then later, when Army Corps of Engineers came up with a proposal for three reservoirs up in have a, kind of escaped me because they kept pushing to add more and more water. They had to have water for multiple years. And that increased the number of reservoirs to three. And of course, the price went up accordingly and the desire to pursue it went down accordingly. So some of those efforts, I think, are best left for people that are interested in them. Believe me, the documentation's all there, can be obtained either through CCSD websites or through the members of the, of the group here, I think. Looking at options for portable water in Cambria is a challenging and difficult assignment. And I think I'm just going to focus on maybe three different areas where I think there's going to be water and where there's a permitting path that is established and doable. And I'll comment about others later if people are interested. But there's a couple of main projects that are taking place in San Luis Obispo County that I think they're watching for Cambria. And one, of course, is the Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is supposed to be up and running by around 2025. And Supervisor Gibson's estimated that that plant should be able to harvest from the wastewater stream of areas down on the South Coast primarily, up to 900 to 1,000 acre feet of water a year. And, which is pretty significant. We look at the situation here in town. And we really eyeball that wastewater treatment stream of water because it returns something of, let's say, we pump maybe 550 acre feet a year in Cambria. And we return something like 400 and some odd acre feet, I guess, to the percolation ponds, is that right? So, you know, there are 400 acre feet of water, it's a lot of water to be able to utilize it, we could utilize it. We've already had permits to pump it and we, we can't we have to, if we inject it up in the well field, we still have to count it against our creditable acre feet that we're allowed to pump. But that is a potential source of water that we are currently just putting down a field and letting it soak into the ground. The second, I think, big source potentially of water coming forward is going to be out of the regional D cell effort that is also through San Luis Obispo. And the details of that and what it's going to look like and who's going to participate, what it's going to cost, I have no idea. But it's slated to come on in the 2040, year 2045, something along, something out that far. And it's supposed to somehow utilize the technology that's existing at Diablo Canyon and reject and utilize it to produce desalted water for, primarily for the South Coast. Pismo Beach and down Oceano down there, but he also went out, Gibson also went out and asked all the other communities if they were interested in participating. And I think we said, well, we're interested in hearing more and, you know, to listen on the details. So I think that's, that effort will be countywide effort. And I think it will garner major attention from Coastal Commission and other agencies. And if it's done at Diablo Canyon, there'll be a tremendous amount of supporting environmental work that has already been done. And has been done for the last 20 years or so. So I view that as a potential source. Obviously, these are sources that are going to be ready next week or next year or anything like that. But I don't think our need is, as far as I can see, have that kind of urgency attached to it. Third area that I think is permitted, the first area is wastewater treatment plant water that we can treat and somehow reinject into the well field. The second would be a regional D cell effort, making use of some of the equipment, the intakes and outfalls at Diablo Canyon. And then the third is we have a discrepancy between pumped water and billed water that runs double digit every billing cycle. So that means that there's, you know, anywhere from 10 to 14 to 17% on the worst months, I think. Water being pumped that's not being billed. And that can be partly for a lot of reasons. I mean, part of it is just endemic to having a big complex water system. You're going to lose some water along the way, but some of it can be retrieved through, you know, putting a camera down every pipe and looking at all the connections and seeing where there's leaks and fixing them when there's an opportunity. It's something that the current group has done a real good job at, they've seen all over town fixing leaks and stuff. But there's, you know, 12% of 550 acre feet of water that's being pumped out of the aquifer, but we can't account for it exactly. So if we could pin that down, might turn out we have more water than we thought, might turn out we add less, I don't know. Just might turn out we have worse infrastructure than we thought. So I think, I think between billable and produced water, there is some segment of water that we are in effect wasting. And if we can find it, figure it out, tighten it up, that might be a supply. Outside of that, I think I'll just leave it. Yeah.
Okay, so do you feel like you have more to do in this, I mean, assignment or is this pretty much your final?
I think, I think we're kind of at a point of stasis really because these large regional projects, I think, offer something that is difficult to reproduce at the town level. You know, I mean, Cayucas has its little water system and wastewater treatment plan and we have ours. And San Simeon has theirs and Hurst Castle has theirs. And, and I think the common sense would say that it's going to be more efficient to combine some of these resources together. I think somebody has to continue to participate with Slow County. Tell them we want to sit at the table and that we want to participate, at least as far as, you know, understanding what the project entails and what kinds of commitments would be made. So I think that person, it could be you, it could be somebody from the R and I committee. It could be the general manager, I don't know. It's going to be heavy duty.
Are you talking about the D cell, the, the region D cell project?
There's, well, both, the, I mean, for the, for the wastewater treatment plant, we're not really going to get any water from that, I don't think. But it serves as a, as a prime example of communities too small to have separate plants themselves getting together and then harvesting. I hope if they can harvest up to 900 to 1,000 acre feet of water, it'd be a real significant undertaking. I think if they can do that, that's great. And, and I would say you look to that as an example of something we could do with our neighbors, like with San Simen, for example. As far as the regional D cell knows, I don't really know enough of the details at this point to know what it's going to make available and to whom and how far afield it's going to go. But they're, certainly their conversations are running far afield at this point.
And then the location they're primarily talking about is Diablo Canyon?
That's the only one I've heard is repurposing, they have a D cell. They have D cell equipment at Diablo Canyon currently. And they have a huge outfall that is tied to cooling systems for the reactors. But if they can, you know, turn some of those intakes and outfalls and do D cell, desalination with it, then they could start producing fresh water. And I haven't heard of any proposal to start a new and separate plant. So I don't know, Ray, maybe you can.
Yeah, I, I can give an update. We, we do, I do participate in the, in those meetings. And right now, it's, it's in the, it's really still in the scoping stage because people are tempted to, to pick a location, but really it's premature. Because it's, it's, it's regional in the sense that, you know, the North County is involved, South County is involved. You know, where there's these communities that don't live next to an ocean. But, but so it's definitely a regional solution. So that's why it's, it's, it is premature to start trying to take a spot for where the plan would be. But, you know, we, you know, the board made a resolution to participate in that. And I've been, I've been participating in those, in the rankings. So it's still in the scoping stage, we've been listening to a lot of proposals and really interesting technologies that you're seeing. You know, whether or not it's probably at these areas, we're recently seen. But when, when it comes time to, for the county, it's, it's a county, it's by the spirit of it. Once they start putting together the R and P, I'll share some.
Okay, um, can you, when you have a minute?
Write it up.
Write it up for me.
And submit it, no problem.
Please, okay, does anybody here have any questions? For Mr. Webb? Okay, anybody in the public want to make any comment on either of these two ad hoc committee reports? I see a hand. Mr. Dudzik, just a second. Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you so much, President Dean. And Mr. Webb, thank you for your presentation. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, sadly, I'm speaking to you from Eugene, Oregon, instead of being able to be there locally, but I'll be back soon. I, I think my overall, my overall comment, you, you made one comment that was a bit a little concerning to me. And you said that our needs are not, that we don't need anything that soon, essentially is what you said. And the reality is the needs are quite urgent in terms of the, the lot of people who don't have water connections right now. And one of the things you, so, so I, I think it's important to recognize that, 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 that need is out there, particularly in light of the agenda item 8A coming up on this next board meeting agenda, which is the discussion and consideration of the modification of the project description for the water reclamation facility coastal development permit application. So in, you know, in, in light of that, I think, I think it's important that these, these alternatives, et cetera, are are considered urgent. And, and pardon me if I, I got on just at 2:02 and, and maybe I missed an introduction. Is there, was there any discussion going to be made of the, of the flood control aspect of the water?
That was not part of their assignment?
Okay. Okay, then.
I don't think, but Ray, we're not responsible for flood control in the community, right, right? No, we're not, the CCSB is not responsible for flood control, it's the county.
Right, and I remember that part of that discussion we had last month. And, and that's, I'm not disagreeing with that. So let me talk just for a minute then. I would, I, I think it's important for this committee to set this ad hoc committee to very carefully review in light of those statements, to review the the recommended edits to the CDP text. The, the fact that, that the CDP application text intends to remove any discussion of water for the full build out of 4,000, 4,650 residential units. That being the case and that being, that recommendation being in place, there's, there's now a big gap. Because it, it basically says that the only option you, that the, the lot owners have is to, the only, the only option that you're looking at that would support the needs of the lot owners is the WRF. Nothing else. Because 45 year, 2045 is way too long for people who waited 20 years already. So I, I'd like to suggest that you, you look at collaborative efforts with the lot owners that can develop alternatives. If you're not in a position to look for them yourself, then you need to be working with us to find them. Because we just can't sit here and hope and pray that in three, four, five, six, seven years, however long it takes for this WRF process to get through phase three. And on the chance that it will allow us to expand operations to support controlled growth, to support the additional meters. That collaboration needs to happen.
Okay, that's going to be a board discussion on Thursday and has not been forwarded to the R and I committee. So we'll see how the discussion goes on Thursday.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other ad hoc committee reports? Okay. I see none, committee member communication, thank you, Jim. And I look forward to getting in writing.
I look forward to writing.
Get your fellow committee members to help you write.
Yes, yes, no doubt.
We have one more to add in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So we're talking about the climate change policy.
Yes.
Assignment that Julie and I work on semi regularly. And so, you know, we all know that we have a meeting with Bruce Gibson to talk about how we can, how we Cambria CCSD can collaborate with them and maybe, you know, get some information and, you know, kind of be a part of what they're doing as a, more or less as a, as a template going forward for this community. I don't think Cambria though, I think Cambria though is probably sort of an outlier of a typical community in, in, within the, within the district in that we're pretty isolated, pretty small community. But given that, we've had some, I've had some, just some bullet points here that I think is worth talking about, maybe discussing along those lines. And that would be, you know, probably promoting, and I'm with probably, I'd like to talk to Bruce about this as well. When we have our, I guess we're having a Zoom meeting. Promote, is to, first one is to promote public transport. It just seems to me that, you know, a lot of our, say, greenhouse gases are probably from tourists that come to Cambria and we love them all, but you know, they drive, they drive everywhere. They drive to and from Moonstone Beach primarily, I believe. And if we could, I know that Cambria used to have like a trolley, sort of a, and then we have, we still have that thing? I've never seen it, I don't see it really work and operate like on that.
They used it on Fourth of July.
Did they? Okay, so you use it during holidays?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, maybe we could promote that and maybe expand that to use that a little. Primarily from, you know, to and from Main Street to Moonstone Beach. And then I think secondarily, I was, I was having thoughts about maybe expanding the community bus in Cambria. I drive occasionally for them and I, I know about their programs, great program, you know. I don't know if it gets a lot of exposure though, you know. I think we could, we could maybe expand that program a bit. Maybe have people who would need to go into Slow or to Paso during the week. We could have, expand that to a, every week we have one or two trips there, you know, and just kind of make that effort to keep people off the road and and then as far as like internals, I, I just don't, I don't know, I don't know that CCSD is a, as a organization really has such a carbon footprint, has a big carbon footprint, that if we did any kind of, I don't know what we do, LPG perhaps, you know, convert all vehicles to LPG, except we didn't have an LPG filling facility. And that's another thing I was going to ask Bruce about is possibility for an alternate source so that we could possibly have, you know, vehicles that run on either compressed natural gas or, or propane or something that had effect, you know. And that's basically the only thing that I can see. And then, of course, you know, promoting, you know, more trees, you know, green stuff.
We love trees.
We love trees, absolutely.
I think, Ray, aren't you discussing something with PG&E about electric vehicle charking stations and all that out at the wastewater treatment plant?
I think Matthew has some, that update.
Yeah, Ray and I were working together along with PG&E, along with Jim Green, EV fleet with PG&E. It's a 2035?
Yeah.
2035, all public service agencies want to have converted to electric vehicles. And so we are in the talks of that pilot program, some of the costs that it would take, some of the benefits of us getting into it early. They pay from, what is it, the line, what's the, what's the terminology? From the line to our plant?
Oh, oh, oh. Yeah, basically, it's just like from the service, like the, they don't, from when, where the, the line connects to the plant. Basically, like the analogies to the meter, to us, we would have to pay that, that portion.
That's the line, invasion.
Pay that portion, we pay the portion from the meter.
From the meter to, to the so, but in our plan, it's really not going to help because we're already, they're already going to upgrade our electrical systems.
Yeah, but we will start to see some of our fleet convert over to electric. We're just in the beginning phases of getting that. And what we hope to do is because 2035 and reality is around the corner. And when our vehicles have maybe 100,000 miles on, you know, and they're doing a lot of driving, maybe we get ahead of the power curve there, so to speak. We're also in discussions and we've gotten a quote to move the EV charging station to the front of the vet's hall, so it gets a little more access and a little more use from the public.
From solar, is that, is that where that would come from? With solars, with battery storage, is that what we're?
No, it'll, it'll actually be hardwired. Hardwired to the vet's hall, and so then we'll be able to charge some EV vehicles out front. So we do have a quote for that, I'm not a group for it or eventually, but it's in the works.
Good, good. Give me just a little written summary at some point so that when I'm asked about it at the board level.
I'll do that today.
Kind of give them an update.
Sure.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about this report? Good job, thank you. And I think our community bus does make periodic trips into both Slow and into Paso.
Once a month, yeah.
Yeah, but maybe they can do it a little more often. And I think it's mostly on, you know, people just call when they need a ride.
That's true.
And I don't think it's really advertised that much.
It, it really doesn't seem to be promoted much at all, you know, I don't, I don't see it around town. I think it's kind of word of mouth, I don't know, I don't know how people find out about it.
It is word of mouth.
Well, we could do something on the website with the CCH, CCSD, excuse me.
But it's all volunteer people driving too, so it's a matter of having enough people be.
But we could do a signup sheet on the website. And so if you get, let's say the quota is, we have to have 15 people sign up, whatever that number, whatever that number is. And you have some of the volunteers that would be able to do the drive, then there could be an online signup form at the, the district website, which like we schedule, that's all, things like that, that would give them on the landing page.
Okay, I kind of got the impression too, that you were sort of suggesting that the church use the community bus. Is that what you were saying?
I would think if we made it available to them, like maybe the bus making stops down Moonstone Beach to pick people. Yeah, more or less, more or less. To and from the city, drop off points. And if it was a regular, going on a regular basis, I mean, this town was really full this weekend. It was a lot of people there. This is the weekend after the Fourth of July, and I thought it would probably be maybe not as full. Like it was, there were a lot of people here and, you know, Main Street, especially on the, on the East Village, it was, there's no place to park, you know. So it might even help, you know, parking, alleviate parking. How successful would it be, I don't know, but it's just, you know, to me, it's like low hanging fruit. You could, you could do that, maybe put a couple of buses, so people are not waiting that long. And if you made it available and you encouraged them at the, say, at the, at the hotels, maybe they would be inclined to use it.
Okay. You're, you're a director, so you can't speak at this meeting. Sorry. Apologize.
And thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you for your report. I don't see many hands up for comments for this particular ad hoc committee report. So let's move on to committee member communications. Does any committee member want to make an announcement, report briefly on his or her activities or ask a question for clarification? Mr. Webb?
Yeah, that one I brought up in other meetings here. Participation in an effort by State of California to nominate marine protected areas off our coastline to the IUCN Green List, which is, it's an international environmental organization that has fairly strict criteria for making the green list. And a protected area is accepted into the green list. It is deemed protected by international standards that have been set for what it means to protect an area out there. And we have gone through the application phase, the candidate phase, the pandemic. the, the pandemic. And we are one meeting away from finalizing our submission to the I U C N, which will occur, I think, by August. And then at that point, they, they decide, and we have every reason to believe that they will decide in favor of adopting it. And it would affect the area known as the State Marine Conservation Area in front of Cambria, the White Rock Conservation Area down in front of, uh, just south of town, and also Catras Boncas State Marine Reserve. And a hundred and twenty other marine protected areas along the coast of California. So there should be, I think, when this, if it gets accepted and gets done, there'll be some news about that. So you won't be surprised.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just a short report. I did, uh, attend a water law and legislation forum recently in Sacramento. Most of what was discussed would probably not impact us. It's a lot. There's a lot of water bills in Sacramento right now. Mainly focused on improving the state board's ability to uh open up water rights again, restrict water rights and um increase fines on water rights. Um, most of those, I'm assuming most of those would not impact us. I am sure, I'm sure we wouldn't be fined by the state board. The one thing that was talked about quite a bit though also is a a bond measure for the twenty twenty four election, working, a lot of people working to get a lot of water money into the twenty twenty four bond. We should expect to see that, see a fair amount of money coming out and track that. That was what was talked about quite a bit.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. So we're ready for Mr. D'Anzo's engineering report.
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, but the table, the engineers, the engineers report table is on front of your attachment. I just wanted, I wanted to highlight a couple of things. Um, so the community park restroom is, we, we have, we have the information that we need from uh the, the consultant, the, the bathroom consultant. So we are getting all of that together. We're, we're getting the package together or we submit it all to the county and we're anticipating um either the end of July or, or beginning of August, we're going to submit that. So.
Is that for funding? Submitted for funding?
No, or.
We have funding.
Or construction funding. This is for the bathroom. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, and uh, and the Spirit Street hang, I'll, I'll talk about that today. Uh, we have the annual water supply and the shortage assessment that I presented to you last night. We submitted that on June twenty seventh. So that's done. I, I'm, I'm letting you all know that because I'm going to take that off the table because it's not going to be, you know, it's not a, next year is going to be necessary again. Um, and also the, the code of nineteen wastewater surveillance, uh, it says that uh, the, the sponsored program uh will be, you know, through the summer of twenty twenty three. Well, it's going to end in July. So this is the last month where we're going to do it. They, uh, the CDC opted to pick a couple of the bigger plants to do the, the surveillance. So San Luis disposed one of them, uh, but we didn't make the cut. So, um, but, but I'm, I'm just letting you know that if there is a possibility of Cal Poly might pick up uh, the, the wastewater surveillance, but pending. Um, yeah, mainly it's like a lot of it is cost related. It's, it's very expensive for us to do it. And it, it does take some staff time for us to collect the, the, the data, minimal staff. And I think, is there anyone else that, that have a question that, and I'm going to talk about the meters also here too. That's, that's all still here.
Have you heard anything back on the skate park grant?
We did. We, we had an update with them and there's some information that we're gonna, uh, it's basically like, you know, just more clarifying information. We had, we had like thirty days to do it and we pretty much have the information. We just put it together.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Does anybody else have any questions for, on Mr. D'Anzo on this engineering report? We have public comment on Mr. D'Anzo's engineering report. We don't see any hands up. Okay. Page here. Second. I think it's public comment on items not on the agenda now. Does anybody have any public item, comment on items? Not on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the committee. But Mr. Dusick, it's his hand though. Just a moment. Okay, go ahead and unmute.
Okay, thank you again, President Dean. Um, and I, I was very intrigued with the comment about the S B six thirty eight bill to enact the Climate Resiliency and Flood Protection Bond Act of twenty twenty four, which if approved by the voters, would authorize the issuance of bonds in the amount of six billion dollars. Um, or um pursuant to the general obligation bond for flood protection and climate resiliency projects. There may be other, other um bond measures in place that uh are, are similar in nature. In any event, this is a good example of where the, the water uh ad hoc committee needs to be preparing for this event so that you're ahead of it, not behind it. Once, once the legislation is approved, it, it's going to be too late to jump in and, and find funding. Um, I don't know the extent to which C C S D is currently lobbying to be part of that funding stream. Uh, that's, that's important information to know. And if you're not, you need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, second. Anybody else have any uh public comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, let's go ahead and do the consent agenda.
You have written comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is our written comments. I apologize.
We, we do have written public comments. I will read here that we have received. The first one is from Linda Prentice, who states, please convey my outrage that a large park with several bathrooms would even be considered when I've owned five lots on Norwich with water meter number ninety one that I cannot build on. Where is your fairness? That's another comment from Linda Prentice. Although I am for children's activities, if the agenda item regarding state park, uh skate park, pardon me, skate park enlargement is enlargement, I am against it due to additional bathroom requirements, e.g. water usage, until at least a hundred building permits are issued. There is a comment from Dolores Miera. Um, first of all, I appreciate all that you do for Cambria and its water and infrastructure. Keep up the good work and thank you for all the time you devote to this intensive work. I'm a resident of Oak Terrace Mobile Home Park located at one two two six Main Street, Cambria, California. That backs up to the Santa Rosa Creek. My home actually backs up to the Santa Rosa Creek. As you know, the March ten twenty twenty three storm brought a huge amount of rain in a short period of time and a muddy, muddy mess for our mobile home park. The streets were flooded and subsequently muddied. As the creek overran its banks, rainwater was unable to drain into the creek and begin rising about one foot per hour, causing an evacuation of the residents. My home was flooded with water and mud only underneath the mobile home up to a foot, but did not enter the mobile home itself. I am not the absolute lowest resident in the park. Others may not have been as lucky. My tool shed and surrounding yard became a mud filled mess. I'm writing you today to ask if there is anything that could be done to shore up the infrastructure along the Santa Rosa Creek where we residents live to prevent the next. And unfortunately, there will be a next devastating flooding episode. As I look out over my back fence, I see some very large trees that came down during the storm now lying in the creek directly across from my house. If that group of trees starts to float down the creek and get clogged downstream, the next flood may occur sooner. Can this potential hazard be removed soon? Will there be a cleanup to the creek project? This is an over fifty five plus park and many are on fixed income here and unable to leave the area during an evacuation order. The owners of the park, Waterhouse Management, hired Mercado landscaping to remove the mud in the streets and from our driveways, which was causing a massive walking and driving problem. Thank you for your attention to this matter and I look forward to your response soon. There is a comment from Dennis Duchek. I have a couple of questions for Board President and I N R Committee Chair Dean. Mr. Webb and Mr. Williams are leading the I N R Ad Hoc Committee on Long Term Water Storage and Flood Control. Since the ad hoc committee's formation, there have been no progress or status reports from this ad hoc committee as the ad hoc committee or staff drafted the work plan, schedule and proposed deliverables for this item. And when will they be sharing these with the I N R Committee Chair, Board Staff and the public? As you know, this work is an urgent part of the strategic plan and is supposed to be included in the strategic plan, item five matrix update presented at every board meeting. Once again, if you or the ad hoc committee members are short on staff or other available technical resources and need some help developing these materials or other analyses, I am offering my technical consulting services in this regard pro bono. I believe those are all the comments related to public comment. Yes.
Okay. Um, I don't believe that it is our purview to clean up along the creek. Is that correct? It is not. Okay. And as far as um the ad hoc committee on water, it is not under their purview to come up with a plan or a timeline. It is just simply to do research on um possible sources of water and water storage. And it would be up to the board to come up with a timeline and plan once their, their job is done. Thank you. Okay, do we have any more public comment? Okay, you've, you've read all of them.
I have read all.
I keep missing a written public comment at this meeting. Okay, on the consent agenda, we have three sets of minutes that we need to review and approve. And let's start with May twenty fourth. Okay, does anybody have any questions or corrections on the May twenty fourth minutes?
I'll second.
Okay, and move we adopt the, um, do we have moved that we adopt the May twenty fourth minutes? It was seconded by Ms. Amade. Can we have a vote? We. Mr. Webb?
Hi.
Ms. Amade?
Hi.
Mr. Seaver?
Hi.
Mr. Meeks?
Hi.
Mr. Williams?
Hi.
Okay, passed unanimously. Okay, um, let's review the June twelfth regular meeting minutes. Does anybody have any questions or corrections on the June twelfth meeting minutes? Being none so far. Anyone want to make a motion to accept the June twelfth special meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Mr. Webb made a motion. Seconding, I'll second. Ms. Amade seconded. Yeah, well, there you go. Go ahead and give the vote. Mr. Webb?
I am.
Ms. Amade?
Hi.
Mr. Meeks?
Hi.
Mr. Seaver?
Hi.
Mr. Williams?
Hi.
Okay, that one passed unanimously. I think we do have a question for the next set. So the, the um special meeting on June twenty sixth, does anybody have any questions or corrections for that? I believe we have a correction that was requested by Mr. Crosby Schwartz.
Yes, I have, um, we received a correction from Mr. Crosby Schwartz. Um, one correction is I think I may have misspelled his name in the minutes. I apologize for that. Um, I will just read his correction on page two of the R and I minutes, page thirteen of the July tenth agenda package. It was reported that I expressed a preference for alternative to water main routing in the canon proposal. This was not my intention. My intention was to suggest a different alternative water main and affluent main routing, not shown in the proposal for district and consultant consideration. My, my comment was as follows. Looking at the alternative routings, I know that it doesn't have to be decided today. I hope that the district and the consultant will give careful consideration to using the state parks road into the day use parking lot. It's pretty much on dry land, except for a short stretch. It avoids horizontal drilling. It doesn't use the Caltrans Highway One Bridge. It seems like a really easy way to do it. In other words, parallel the coast highway up to the state parks driveway into the day use parking area. That road continues right across to your connection point. It's on dry land, pretty much. It's easy to inspect. It's easy to make repairs in the future and so forth. It just seems like a really good alternative to consider. Thank you. After the meeting, we walked along my suggested alternative routing to verify the feasibility of this routing. We were interested to see that the emergency water main follows the same suggested routing, except that it parallels the coast highway in wetlands instead of upon dry land. A simple way to describe my suggested alternative water main and affluent main routing is that it could follow the routing of the current emergency water main installation. So those, the um, the change to the minutes will have to be made uh to clarify that he was, that Mr. Schwartz was not uh promoting alternative two.
Okay, and he's requested to be able to speak. Let me make sure that we have covered everything that he was concerned about in the minute. Mr. Schwartz?
Good afternoon, President Dean, and thank you, uh, Mr. Williams. I, I think, I, I appreciated you reading my entire comment. I don't expect that to be in the minutes. Uh, I don't know how you'd simplify uh what I had stated other than the last sentence of my, uh, of my email, which was to say, I'm suggesting that an alternative routing not shown in the canon proposal would be to follow the routing of the current emergency water main installation.
Okay, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody else have any, Mr.?
Yeah, I made a comment during that meeting regarding Cannon's uh, um, let me review their different alternates that I wanted him to make. I wanted to make sure, actually, I wanted to make sure that um they considered slip line.
Okay, yes, you did do that. I remember that. Okay.
And it's not, it's not reflected in the, in the minutes.
I can't. Yeah.
I could say if, if, if it's a viable, if it is in fact viable, uh, alternative, it can save us a lot of time and money and committee.
Okay, okay. I think he's already got it in the minutes here. Okay, any other corrections? Okay, can we have a motion to adopt the minutes with the corrections that have been discussed? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Okay.
He's going to make it easy today.
Yes. Your role call, Mr. Webb?
Hi.
Ms. Amade?
Hi.
Mr. Meeks?
Hi.
Mr. Seaver?
Hi.
Mr. Williams?
Hi.
Okay, um, unanimous with those corrections. Okay, Mr. D'Anzo has been waiting very patiently to do his presentation.
Right, thank you. Thank you, President Dean. So I, um, what I haven't shared the presentation through Zoom land, um, you can see it here on the screen. So, um, the, the item before you is just very simple statement is the Badger sensor meter upgrade. Because right now we have Badger as our meter brand. That's the, the, both the brass body and actually meter itself is a brass, it is a Badger product. And the electronics, which is what we'll just call the endpoint, successively call it. But the, the electronics that transmits and receives information is called the endpoint. Um, we looked at all the different technologies. Uh, I understand all because there's, I'm sure there's a missing, but a lot of prevalent technologies that are out there. Uh, from Neptune to newer to, you name it. We, we, we looked at it. Uh, the, the, um, let me go ahead and show them the next screen. So, so currently, the, the current meter that we have in the ground, you know, we're, we're using the automatic meter system. So we call it A M R. That's what it sounds like. We use, we use the Badger units, the endpoints and the software. So we use Badger products. Um, but it's the endpoints that are reached very useful life, uh, which is resulting in a lot of manual reads. Uh, Jim Green was not able to join in this meeting, but he was going to, you know, describe, you know, just extent of work that they do to do these manual reads. And um, but I'll describe it very briefly. but I'll describe it very briefly. Typically, the way the AMR system would work is the 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 operators would just drive down the street and then they would they would pick up all the signals. Ideally, that's how it should be, and the meter read should be that simple. But the way it's been is that they would drive down the street and then an error message would come up. And then they would have to go and actually like go and manually read the meter. And when we're talking about looking, when I'm just talking about like opening the box, there's dirt, there's flower beds. Which is, you know, like, like like things that I've that I've overgrown. So it's it's a time consuming effort for our our staff to do it is or used to be a a couple of days effort is now close to two weeks for them to do it, and it's all hands on deck when they do it. We've we've actually considered, you know, at this point, to stop that measure to actually hire like like a meter reader like that. But we haven't been able to find any of those either, so. But anyway, that's that's the the issues that we're having. And uh and the proposed method that we have that that we want to propose before you is we want to upgrade the entire meter system with the Badger Orion AMI system. We've we've talked about the AMI system in the past where it's no longer the 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 issue, the you don't need to drive the drag down the street anymore. A signal gets sent whether by radio signal or by 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 cell technology to our to our plant. And then all the readings can have are ha- all happening instantaneously. As a matter of fact, uh, we can track a lot of metrics with the system, you know, where if someone has a leak, we're not going to find out two months later. We're going to find out within a few minutes that that if someone has a leak. So so that's what AMI, the the value of AMI is that I presented that before you, but I'm just summarizing it in in a in a couple of sentences because we all we've all unanimously accepted that that would be a good technology to go. So when staff now look at the different technologies, what we found is that the the radio system that we have now, we were hoping to upgrade to the AMI system. And that requires infrastructure, radio infrastructure to do. Um, that would be fine if that was the only thing that we needed to do. But what we what we've been finding is that all of these other companies that I've shared for you need cellular technology as in in addition to radio technology. So um, and not only that, um, even with both technologies being used, uh, we would still need uh, there there would still be like thirty or so that the that the operators would still need to drive by. Uh, it's not they don't have to manually go and open up the meter, but they would still just drive by and it would and they would receive a signal that way because there's still dead spots that even self, you know, we all have cell phones around here. We all know that there's dead spots. We can't read. And uh, there are still are are dead spots. The the good thing about it, though, it's not the same as making a phone call. The the bandwidth of 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 cell technology in in the in the meter infrastructure is is very low. So meaning that just because you won't get a signal in certain spots, you could still receive the signal via cell technology. That's why this upgrade is only going to require like thirty counts, thirty houses that would need um endpoints to be read, you know, somewhat somewhat manually, but not really because the 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 um the operator would ride by. So kind of a roundabout way, uh, when we've kind of gone back now to to now Badger is what we're using. Badger has um a a technology, an AMI technology. And what I'm proposing is that we think that we should just upgrade the Badger system. And um we would upgrade the endpoints. We would replace all of the endpoints uh, to the Badger Orion cellular, you know, the water endpoints and then you know, the the if you want to see the product, it's in their packet. And then also upgrade to the new Badger Beacon Advanced Metering Analytics Software, AMA Software. Um, this is something that um was somewhat radical, like three years ago, you know, the idea of like going into the cloud and um and 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 doing this from this way, but this uh, this system, it has, because currently what we're doing is uh we're we're using the Beacon product, and there's like an an intermediary likes like gap between here and the AMI software, which um it's still antiquated. Uh, it would it would be best that we just upgrade to the Beacon software, but it would mean that we would need to upgrade to the Beacon endpoints. So um so that's the proposal you're saying uh before you do that we would like to in instead of putting out an RFP for all of these different meter companies to essentially do a product, you know, that's already similar to Badger. Um, why don't we just upgrade our our system to the Badger um product? And we can avoid all of that. And and we we've uh uh, you know, we we run this by, you know, legal counsel as far as the contracting and all of that goes. And uh, and we can make a strong uh push, a a strong justification that sole source is appropriate in this case. Uh, and what we would do, so you were asked already, what about the meter bodies? Well, we we propose to replace only ten percent of the meter bodies, because like I was saying, uh, the meter bodies themselves, uh, in in Jim and his and his group have tested, some they suspected were, you know, were bad, but in reality, they were um like the only, there there was only like seventeen meters over the last year that were bad. So uh, what we're, so what we're planning on doing is is part of this proposal is to replace ten percent of the meter bodies as needed. If you know, it's clear that, oh, that meter needs to be replaced. And um and there is a regulation up there, like a best management practices through our water audits uh, to replace ten percent of our meter bodies every year. So that's what we intend to phase. And so like, you know, so over, so within basically the next five years, we would be replacing uh meter bodies um as as we go. So but to start this project, we would replace ten percent of the meter bodies, but we would replace all of the endpoints and upgrade to the new Beacon um software. So so that means that we would sole sort the sole source the meters, the endpoints and the software, okay, we would just, you know, buy it from from Badger, but we would still have the installation. Uh, the installation contractors will still be contracted through public R and P classes. That would still need to be done. But the the difference between this effort and like the the other larger effort is that we won't need to install any infrastructure. So that's going to save the district at least five hundred thousand dollars. So um, because we're we're going to be using the 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 technology that um that's out there. So a little bit of background on this, um, you know, why didn't we do this from the beginning? Well, part of part of the issue was we we uh you know, we we wanted to to go the radio route because, you know, radio has always been kind of like, you know, you know, deemed as more reliable than than cellular technology. And um and but I was telling you that, you know, all the vendors still need a combination of radio and cellular to achieve maximum coverage. And it doesn't even, when I say maximum, it's not even a hundred percent. It's like there's still a little bit of percentage. But I I but cellular technology has improved, um, has advanced even from three years ago. Uh, and the advantage to us too is that no radio communication infrastructure will be required. And uh, and the other um the other benefit is that it would be seamless conversion because uh, our operations staff already use the Beacon products. We have Beacon endpoints. Uh, you know, and then, you know, that we're familiar with the actual meter bodies themselves that we were able to replace them, not no problem. Um, and our financial staff, so that's the other component here, like our billing and financial um, also has to interface with this new product. And Beacon is is already a product that we're using in our billing software. And now we're going to get the new and improved version of the Beacon AMA software. So so what I'm 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 proposing, what what I'm asking today is is we want your recommendation that to move this forward, if you think this is a a good approach, because um, what's going to happen is we were to present this to the board cold turkey, everyone would be like, whoa, what's going on? Like, you know, you're not putting in RFP, why? Well, this is the reason, you know, we think that this would be a good approach. And you know, the 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 prices are before you, and these prices are somewhat rough, you know, we when it comes time to to forward this forwarding bits to the finance, we would have the contracts a little bit more dialed in. Uh, like, even the the prices will be a little bit less because the they they overestimated the the number of commercial accounts there. So um that's something that's going to to change. We're gonna, we're gonna talk a little bit more with with Beacon regarding the spine tuning the the numbers. But for for uh, for the case of presenting this before you, that's, you know, we we got these quotes, we got the all of the the cut sheets before you, just to to start the conversation. So what I am um you know, seeing the basically what what it says here, staff seats and recommendations from the committee perceive the procurement by non-competitive proposals pursuant to CCSD policy two one three five, which is the the our finance, our financial purchasing policy. And then talks about sole source. And and to select Badger is that sole source for the AMI network. So and if and if your committee approves that post-bashin, I will forward it over to to um the finance committee to see how you can pay for it. So.
I think you started to have a question.
Yeah, of course. Do you do you think, Ray, that um uh, in Jim Webb's report, he stated that there's something like twelve percent of water on account of work uh from wellhead to distribution. Uh, could that be because of faulty meters?
It's uh or the readings, yes. Oh, you're right. There there is a component of that faulty of faulty readings. And uh, it it's it's a combination of either the the meter bodies or the endpoints themselves not being uh, not doing their job. So.
So this could have an ROI to it.
Yes. And um yes. In a nutshell.
And and are the bodies being replaced with uh, like a composite type material?
No, it would be a brass. It would also be a brass, but also be a beacon product.
Okay, so we heard in the past that um some of the meters are under reading because of wear on the impellers inside the meters. So are you talking about um this only being the part of the meter that actually transmits the reading? What about, so what about the impellers that may be worn that are under um counting the amount of water that's being used?
So, yeah, we, you know, that's why we will uh so this, the the good thing about this is instead of doing a wholesale replacing of all the meter bodies, um, because like, by by the way, the 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 lifespan of the meter body is, you know, fifteen to twenty years, which that's why we still need to replace the meter bodies, but we're not going to do it all at once.
Phase it in.
We're going to phase it in. So that's why, um, and the the good thing about that is that, you know, when we when we start replacing them ten percent at a time, we're gonna, oh, this is, it turns out that we are getting a good return of of investment on this because it is our cash register. Uh, and you know, at that point, you know, two, three years down the line, we could budget, you know, replacing, you know, all of the models. So um but but my proposal for you right now is that we 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 just want to close ten percent uh, and will prioritize the which meter bodies they there are, because like I said, not not all of them need to be replaced, but um but we believe ten percent of them need to be replaced.
Okay, anybody else?
A couple of quick questions, Mr. Dean. So you mentioned that the endpoints are to the end of their useful life. Is this an issue with all systems? Is it particular to Badger system that it has a certain endpoint? Yeah, we looked into that. Basically, I'm wondering, are we going to be replacing things more often with this system than with other systems, really?
Yes, the short answer is yes. Um, the whether it's, I whether it's antiquated and battery is real. Or um or it's just new technology. Sometimes they they just get outdated after ten years. So um, in which case, this is really what happened to us. They stopped, like Badger stopped making those endpoints. As a matter of fact, when I first started working here at Jim, you know, I owe me, hey, we were able to buy like, you know, a couple hundred of those discontinued endpoints, because we still needed it in our system. Um, but uh but to end, but to to answer your your question, ten ten years is a a reasonable useful life for the endpoints. Uh, and and whether technology changes or the the battery runs out. And typically, when when the these are all potted systems, like you you replace it, you don't replace the battery, you just take out the the endpoint and put a new endpoint in its place. So.
For plug and play.
Yeah, it's plug and play. And so then the the thing that I haven't said yet is like the actual um installation and see what can be done before the end of the year. Because just it's just plug and play. Um, and with, you know, with the exception of eight people meters out, the other thing too that I haven't mentioned is that in in the installation, uh, there will need to be some meter covers that would either need need to be replaced or have a whole drill in them that have better reception.
And as you replace these endpoints, will they also be testing to make sure that the meter we're replacing and pointing on doesn't have a impeller that's not working?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's part of the 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 ten percent that we, you know, and if we if it's more than ten percent, then we replace it.
Okay, so this one million one hundred and twenty two thousand eight hundred and forty eight dollars and ninety nine cents does not include the installation?
No.
Okay.
One more question, Mr. Pianto. So I see here, we've got um four thousand of these endpoints, basically. It's it's for the entire community here. So I would, I just wanted to make sure we're not providing a no bid contract to someone that is going to have to roll into a bigger contract in the future. This is this is sort of one contract that will stand alone. Basically, we don't have any we don't have any plans to expand the system or anything. Just wanted to make sure that this contract doesn't force us to roll into a bigger contract down the line.
No, this is the only thing that that forty thousand dollars there is is a fee. And and by the way, that fee is for all of the other vendors. In this case, it's forty thousand, and that's and and uh, that that fee ranges anywhere from forty to seventy that that we've seen. So um, that still needs to happen.
Okay, okay.
It's a contract you were asking about. Is the forty thousand?
No, that all I was wondering is, is there some expansion Ray has in the back of his mind that we're not only are we going to do this, but we're going to do something else in the future, and we're going to need another contract for more cellular service for somebody. And since we've got, and since we've got Badger on board, we're going to just take their contract and move it along even further. It's a good way to keep a contract going if you're a vendor, but uh I just want to make sure we're not doing that.
I'll say this, I'll say this, but um what we hope, you know, it's not just me, Jim is locked up with me on this idea, is that what we hope is to have to install other meters that are not residential meters, like, you know, to to do submetering. So submetering and pressure monitoring, those are the two things.
Okay.
And uh, and those are really good for leak detection waters. So
Right.
So essentially, like, we we would, we would place it like in 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 a in a water, in a water main valve or somewhere like that, where just like when 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 that when that pipe broke, you know, on on the pedestrian, near near the pedestrian bridge, I mean, it took weeks before anyone found it. With with uh, with a system like this, we can do things like that. We can add pressure monitoring. We can, and that that uh that, Eric, is something that we don't need, we don't need Badger. We could have, we we could hire another company that that might do, might have a better product than Badger, but it would be compatible with the AMI system.
Good. Okay, thanks. That's that answers my question.
I look forward to us being able to do that for leak detections. We've talked about that a lot over the last few years, especially since the the water main break behind the Blue Bird.
Yeah, this is, it's the, it's the steps. This is the first step for all of those, you know, when when I'm hoping, you know, that our system becomes a smart system.
Yeah. So so that, so the software, would there be more software available? If you're submetering, say, sections of the city, would there be software associated with that? Could be some sort of logic and say, hey, you're gonna, you're gonna get an email, you know? Park Hill is really low in this area here.
Yes, and it would be, yeah, it would be, it would be. Yes, and it would be, yeah, it would be, it would be a live alert, you know, whether it's by text or by, you know, whatever it is. And, uh, but no, it would be compatible with the software that we have. So. Because this is not, uh, the actual technology is not proprietary, you know.
Yeah.
This, the, the actual product is, but, um, as far as, you know, cellular technology, that's not.
One more question. Will this, uh, do these new endpoints allow, uh, end user to interface with it? So you can see your, see your bill?
That was my question.
I'm just seeing this picture here, where they show a picture of a guy with a, looks like, you know, maybe a residential end user looking at her phone.
Friendly.
Yeah, the. The, the short answer is yes. The, the difficult answer is, uh. You know, whether or not we, whether or not we would have to pay for that module, this, uh, in, in historically, there's different modules that you can add on. And, and the way, the way this works is if, um, if enough customers want the portal. Um, then the district, you know, the board might opt for, you know, hey, let's pay for, you know, the extra. I don't know how many. A thousand dollars it would be to, to do it. And then it would give an opportunity for, for the customer to have that. That usability. I would suggest that, that it would be, that it would be charged for it because, uh, because the, the district would already know if. You know, if there's an issue. Um, so. Like, when, when you're talking about all of the, the, the notifications. Uh, we already have that capability. It is that it's two months of data later on. But, uh, as we would look at the meter data, it's like, oh yeah, you used up a lot of water here. Um, and we would call the, the customer, except it's. Now it would be a situation where we'll use up a lot of water and it would just be like fifty minutes of. You know, time, so.
So for those people who already have the flume attached to their meters, will their flumes still work? It wants this new technology is installed.
Yeah, and the flume would still work if we didn't opt for that port. I mean, it would, it would work regardless.
Otherwise, it would replace it essentially.
Oh, oh, it, it was like this little unit that you, that you actually attach, you, you, you attach in line to your, your, um, you know. Like after your water meter. And, uh, and it has its own cellular. Portal, it, yeah, yeah, has its own app.
Some little mag meter, sort of.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions before I see the public has a question?
One other question, Ray, and it, I'm sorry, because the, the history component of, when was the last time the district invested in the software? Like any type of upgrade?
Well, the, I imagine the Tyler was.
How long ago was that? Just curious.
Well, it was a little bit before my time. Um, so like I say, three years ago.
Yeah, okay. It's taken a long time to get it completed, though. Yeah, I mean, when, when we just finished getting Tyler totally on board, but about a year ago, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah, so it, it, it was done in like stages. Anything else? Okay, does anybody in the public have any questions? I don't see any hand raised. Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion on, uh, for recommending, recommending?
So, this, there's, so, I, I'm asking for your, you're, you're basically going to be recommended to your board. Whether we go in this direction, but it's gonna need the board open to the side.
To the board or are we forwarding just a bunch of the?
Well, I mean, it's. But like, when I, when I go forward, I'm gonna say that, you know, they rejected it or they accepted it.
And then the board will refer to.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll, I'll make a motion to forward the non-compete proposal to the board directors.
Okay.
Now, second.
Yeah, okay, so Mr. Williams made the motion, Mr. Webb seconded, do a little call, Mr. Williams.
I.
Mr. Webb.
I.
Miss Adamadee?
I.
Receiver.
I.
Okay.
A lot of work.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay, so I think next is your report on the status of Stewart Street.
Yes, um. We went into some. Issues that I think it's, that I would like to bring before the, before the. Before it gets hot. So, you know, the Stewart Street tank, um. So the Stewart Street tank project is a, a project that we've had. That, you know, it, it's, it's in need of repair. Have a little slide that I should use this. So it's two bolted steel tanks, one at a hundred twenty-five thousand gallons, one to two hundred twenty thousand gallons. It's, it's over in the lodge hill area. It's, and it's thirty percent of our water distribution, where, you know, that this, this particular tank, tanks are. Uh, in our current P G E S S T program, when it was first, when the feasibility study first, actually about the feasibility when. When, uh, when the, the initial preliminary design started. Uh, were water projects that were included, there were facilities and resources-ish projects that were, were considered, you know, you mentioned, for example, like the solar farm. That was considered in, in the, the bigger overall scope. Um, and then, you know, the initial preliminary design scope, you know, estimated twenty million dollars. So, well, that's not. So, you know, so we pared it down. So that's why the, the current E G E project now is twelve point one million, that includes this only for. Uh, wastewater. But the S S D did do a design for a welded steel tank. And not only that, it was a welded steel tank, but it was also, um. Anyway, so I. So in, in, uh. The welded steel tank, you know, was going to be, uh, like a two and a half million dollar project. Um, so. The, the project, so we, so that, that went on the cutting board. Now, we, we, we couldn't do that project. Um, so what staff has opted to do is, you know, we, we, we contact, we've contacted. A few vendors, um, about possibly. Replacing the, the existing bolted steel tank. With a light product with also a bolted steel tank. Um. The issue here was that, that welded steel is the superior product, but it, but it was also the superior price. Um, the bolted steel tank, the, the, the technology has improved in a sense that the coatings have improved tremendously. And, and in which case, the, the product can still last you fifty years with, uh, with good maintenance. So that's, the, that's the, the, the option that we might move. And, um. And coincidentally, there was a, this E P A community grant project. That we included, uh, the bolted steel tank pro, uh, project as. As, you know, to be submitted as part of this, uh, the, the grant program. And we got approved. And so there's three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars because, uh, it was a. Like a seventy percent or eighty percent, I forget how much exactly it was. But it was, the, the total project was gonna be about five hundred thousand dollars, but we would get three hundred seventy-five, um, of that. Um. So, um. So that's where we're at, at the moment. So we're, 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 we're moving forward with the, the bolted steel tank. Uh, it's the, the, the Stewart Street tanks aren't getting better as we, as we speak, you know, it's, it's. We're, we're, we're wanting to move forward with it. The couple of issues that came up was, okay, so, so I, I wanted to talk about some current actions that we did. So, uh, you know, we, we have been in discussions with the E P A, you know, project people. Uh, so Julian Bletz is our, um, contact there, uh, has responded to our, our district's application, because we submitted a, um. Uh, a N I P A trying to get a categorical exclusion for, for the project. So there, it's under review at the moment for that. Um, the other thing that we've done, uh, just, uh, in June, so it was, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. We submitted our, we officially submitted our application to the regional board division of drinking water. So on occasion. Uh, Jim sometimes will say D D W, that's what this means, the division of drinking water. But it's, it's, it's a branch within the regional board that, that does that. So, you know, so we've submitted. The, the, the project for that, because it's required, whenever we do any kind of, of water infrastructure upgrade, we need to let the, the division of drinking water know. That we're doing it. Uh, but the next steps that I want to present for you is that, that we, we feel. Because there are new, uh, guidelines that, that have come to, to our attention. Uh, like that we, we, we feel that we need to do, we, we feel that we need to go ahead and use seismic and foundation evaluations. Provides seismic and scientific criteria to the tank manufacturer and, and assess the soil conditions. Why, why, why is this, why is this an issue? And why did I think that we could avoid this in the past? Because. Uh, when we replaced light for light. The idea of, um, going with the welded steel tank, the reason why we needed to change the foundation, that, that's why it became an expensive project, because. It, the, the foundation needed to be replaced. It wasn't like it could be replaced, it needed to be replaced because. Welded steel, we would have to use a thicker, more material, which would make me more weight. Uh, it means, and more weight means, uh, a change of design on the, on the foundation, a new foundation. We thought that if we can replace light for light, we can avoid that. The, the drawback with that, though, is that it's going to reduce the volume. Because, uh, the new, uh, the California building code regs, we have to now. Follow the latest, um, regulations, which would re, require that the height, the, the, um. The, the freeboard in the tank needs to be more. And, and so, but if we replace the same, the same size tank, that means that that freeboard will be less and less volume. Uh, for, for the tank. So it's not gonna be that three twenty-five, or that two twenty-two, twelve and one twenty-five. It's going to be a little bit less than that. So, um. So that's why, you know, like, we, 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 we feel that we start, we need to start doing some seismic and foundation evaluations. If we still need to do a, it's not a question of like, are we gonna try to avoid it? It's more, you know, if we need to replace the. The foundation. And the other thing too, that's also required, um. Again, the other thing too is that we want to develop both the tank specification that the district can use to solicit construction bids for the replacement of tanks. Um. Why, why, why is this an issue? The issue is because of our grant funding requirement. Our, our grant funding requirement does not allow us to use templates from vendors to develop a spec. We have to write our own spec. So in this case, um. Um, we, we would need to, like, get a, you know, the same people that we would hire for this, for, for engineering consulting. We would have them write the spec with the new tank specification, but the same, the tank, for them to do it, a tank specification, they would need to do this seismic. Foundation evaluation. So, so staff would wanna, want, wants to do this, this, this evaluation soon. Soon, like maybe next week. So, but, um, but we, and we do have the, the funds for this evaluation encumbered in our. In our fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four water budget. And, and, but it's important for, for you all to know that it's not going to be taken from the construction, because if we do any kind of construction. Prior to getting the grant officially funded. Then, you know, we would not, we, we would be in jeopardy of losing that money. So, so, but, but all of the preliminary engineering is not part of the construction. It's just preliminary engineering. Um, but. Once we have all of this information, we could now, uh, you know. Put it out to bid for, for the contractor and get it replaced. And, and if we do need, uh. Uh, and, and if it's gonna be more money because of, of, of the foundation, then, uh. I, I did, the, the last time that, um. Uh, when Solid Carb Hall used to represent this district, uh, you know, and, you know, that there's a possibility that we could get more money. Uh, because, you know, the, the, the project will, will go up in cost if we were to do it with a new foundation. But that, well, we'll cross that vision again. But in the meantime, three hundred seventy-five thousand is still, that's great, you know, I'll take that over zero. So. Um, but in order for us to get all our ducks in a row. Then we have to follow these rules. And, and in order to follow these rules, we have to do this investigation. So. I, I really, I don't think I'm asking you all to do any kind of action. This is just an update, you know, because, uh. I know a lot of people are, are curious about what's going on with Stewart Street tank. Um. Uh, we do need to do something, that's why, but, but in order to do it, we need to do these things. And I. Didn't want to surprise everyone, and they go, why are you doing all of these geotechnical studies? It's like, well, this is the reason.
So what is this evaluation gonna cost? You said to fund your incumbent, how much is incumbent on that?
I think like we, we, uh. I think we put a fifty thousand.
It's just what I wrote that, so wait.
Yeah, I, I think we, I think we put fifty thousand, you know, and I could get the, the exact number, but it's something that may, right?
Might be, uh, redundant question, but there's, there's no, uh, technical drawings of those, one of those tanks were built, that they could look at. You show you how deep the, the concrete is and what the concrete. What kind of concrete it was.
Yeah, um. Yeah, I, that, that's a good question. I'm not sure, like, what type of asphalt we have. We do have, we do have some drawings. We, we, I, I take that back. We do have some drawings, but I'm not sure how in-depth those asphalt.
Anybody else? Okay, um, can you put this, um. Presentation on the website? I know you have the one that we just went through.
Sure.
Okay. No one else have any questions? Does anybody in the public have a question? I don't see any hands up. Okay. Well, it sounds good. That was a good, um, update on this, because everybody has been wondering what's going on with the Stewart Street tanks and. You're probably gonna get asked again when you do your, since you're here, reported the.
Coincidentally, I was looking at them today, pretty close up, you know, behind, behind the fence, of course. Yeah, they're pretty, they're rusty.
Yeah.
Very bad.
So have you taken our new community members on a tour of all of these things? Of the tanks and everything?
I haven't, no.
Oh.
I think you should.
You should take, you should take our new people in to, so you haven't gone to the well sites or the, um. Federal lift station or the W R F or the tanks?
The last time I, I, anyway, to, uh. There, Mark couldn't join us. Yeah, but we, we did, we were able to go see the, the wastewater plant at W R F. But we couldn't. Did, did, uh, did Jim take you to see the, the well sites during that time?
No, we just said the W R.
We, we could schedule another time for that.
We'll take the trolley.
The trolley only goes up and down Main Street.
Just a thought.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Are the committee.
Yeah, this is, it's in the past, we've done that. We, we've gone and looked at the, the Stewart Street tanks and. Building where all the stuff was and all of that. Salute Carb Hall actually climbed the tank when we took him. Can we do that with Jimmy Panetta? Okay.
No, no, no.
Anybody else have any questions on the Stewart Street tanks? Okay, future agenda items. Thank you, Ray. Anybody have any future agenda items? No?
Okay, I have a question. Okay, when it comes to, like, the public comments that came in, especially because I have concerns on. The one that wrote in in regards to Santa Rosa and the mobile home park, are we at least responding to them by giving them some type of a. Formalized. Response saying, we're very sorry, but that's not something we service. Uh, sometimes we assume.
I think she has been responded to. This public comment came in. Prior to the last two special meetings and inadvertently didn't get put in your pocket for our last regular meeting. So this is a. Public comment. I don't remember. Do you have the date on that public comment? It's been quite a while. I, I think it was answered, but I'm not positive.
Just for everyone's, uh, I, I know it's not part of the agenda, but. But the California Fish and Wildlife is needing to obtain stream bed operation from, that's, that's the thing. It's like. Um, like even, you know, when, when we, we, we're, we're attempting to do some work on Van Gogh and Creek and. We still need to file a stream bed operation. Um.
I think it's in the works.
Yeah.
The rancher there, I can't think of his name, that Wayne. And he was saying, you know, he was like, a bunch of. Water and, and debris had backwash and it's, and it's blocking the Van Gogh intriguing. We can't touch it. Water and and debris had backwash and it's blocking the Van Gordon Creek and you can't touch it.
Well, see, that's my my point. Sometimes we. They make the assumption, at least I do as a community member even, where it's like you look at something and go, I don't understand, like, I can't fix it. Like, it just seems so simple, right? And then you're talking about permits. And so I. I think the more that we can educate and inform, it's just super helpful.
This public comment came from April third and I I'll go back and look, but I think I responded to her that. This was under the jurisdiction of Fish and.
Because that at least is something that gets passed on, like passed on at a coffee shop, passed on walking down the street, you know, I mean, I mean, it's. Every is a special place in the sense of.
I'll go back and look because I do think I do think I responded.
Yeah, I seem to remember you did, yeah.
Yeah. But I'll verify that. But yeah, we did talk about that before. Okay. Okay, if there's nothing else. Thank you, everybody. If there's no objection, we can adjourn. So we have the that time.
Our break was three thirty-one.
Right, we are calling. Adjourning the meeting at three thirty.
Okay.